Order the June eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Delaware Spining Commission and Karen, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Burger.
Here.
Commissioner Creaker.
Here.
Commissioner Getzelt.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw. Commissioner Reggs Del Cronin. Chairman Hayworth.
Here. And I would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag. Okay.
We have George just joined.
There he is.
Yeah. You're muted, George.
Thank you.
George.
How you doing?
Good. Moving on to consent agenda. Any comments?
Nope.
Changes?
Nope.
We have no public, so we have no public comment.
I have a motion.
We have a motion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's adopted. Public comment. Again, we don't have any public, so I guess we'll move on. Reports. Anybody have any questions? Public comment? Any questions from the commission? No. Okay. I guess we don't have to vote on that, do we Karen or John?
No, it's just accepted.
All business, there is none. We'll move right along. And new business, I'll turn it over to City Manager Gertan. The next two new items are for him.
Alright, thank you Chair. So this should be fairly fairly quick meeting. These are two fairly easy items. I wanted to talk a little bit about code enforcement because even though the planning commission is not really necessarily in direct line in code enforcement activities as land as land use officials in the city. I know people come to you all with code enforcement issues or with questions about codes. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we're seeing, what we're going to be doing at the staff level. How we're going to be handling code enforcement issues a little differently than we have in the past. For various reasons, mainly because of the economy and with people doing remodels or thinking about selling their house or doing short-term rentals or ADUs. Any of those situations are what what we in the building fields like to call a triggering event. And so triggering event basically means it's a reason for our building inspector, building official Joe Headley to visit somebody's house and to inspect something. Whether it's to inspect, you know, do the pre-inspection for somebody who's going to sell the house or somebody who wants to purchase a house or to help somebody get with their permit permitting for a remodel, that type of thing. Generally speaking, because nobody's perfect, when they do do show up for that, they they often find code code violations. They can be simple things just from, you know, fences too big or encroachment into an easement or things like that, all the way up to unpermitted structures. And so and the the issue that we're finding as because it usually starts with us reviewing the file when they come in and ask for those types of things. And so generally speaking, Joe or Karen will find previous code code violations in the file and usually a letter from either the chief of police or the city manager or the building official from the past. Notifying the property owner of the code violation, giving them a certain amount of time to rectify the code violation. And then that was it. In a lot of cases, there wasn't any follow-through to verify that the code violation was cleaned up. And so then when Joe goes out there, he finds that the code violation hasn't been cleaned up. So now we're going back sometimes cleaning up ten years plus in in violations and surprise for folks. So so we're working on processes. We're looking at the ordinances to kind of formalize how we handle code enforcement. So that those types of things don't happen. We want to be fair with everyone and be clear with the community on what the process looks like. And kind of, you know, start to get folks used to the idea that we're going to be doing code enforcement in the city. Generally speaking, we're not proactive when it comes to code enforcement activities, meaning we don't have the staff or the resources or the desire to go out and look for violations. You know, if we see them and they're egregious, especially if they're health and safety issues, we're going to deal with them immediately. But generally speaking, building inspectors and and our officers kind of keep blinders on and are only out in the community dealing with what they're out there to be dealing with. And not looking for minor code infractions. But as they come up, we will work with property owners to rectify those, especially if there's going to be transfer of ownership. And and so like I said, we just want to clean up the process a little bit. I wanted you all to be aware that we're going to be doing this because even minor code enforcement things, even simple things like cars being parked on the street for more than seventy-two hours, sometimes weeks or months or even years being used as excess storage and non-operable. Those are being dealt with by our officers. We just towed a vehicle yesterday that had been parked for a number of months at least and was being used as excess storage in front of a property. And as we get complaints, we have another one up on Los Encino, similar thing with vehicles and we've had complaints. So we're going to be dealing with those types of things more proactively. But we don't want it to be a shock for the community because really, like I said, there there hasn't been much code enforcement done in the city in the in the recent past or ever. And when it was done, it wasn't followed up on. And so I think that the community has settled into a kind of a culture of don't worry about it, the city won't come and bother you with it and you don't need to take care of it. But like I said, it's come to a head because I know some of you have been getting complaints, council members have been getting complaints. Karen and I get complaints. And so it it it's becoming something that the community wants us to put an effort into. And recently, we've had a few situations that have become public nuisances and health and safety issues. And those we have to take seriously because if we don't, then the city's potentially liable as well. So we've we've been dealing with those and that's been helping us find where our gaps are in our in our administrative citation, administrative hearing process. And so we're going to be working on clarifying those, updating our ordinances. Because like I said, we want everybody to be treated the same. We want everyone to know what the rules are and nobody people will be surprised that we're taking code enforcement a little more seriously, but we don't want them to be surprised on what the process is. We want to work with folks. Something that may come back to you that we may work into the ordinance that may be a planning commission function would be once we get to a point where where folks clean up their code issue, but they don't do it in the time limit that we prescribed for them. There's administrative fines that go along with that. My preference in in all of my previous roles has always been to fines are a motivating factor to get people in talking to us and to get them to take their code violation seriously and get them cleaned up. But you know, I don't look at them as a as an alternative revenue source for the city and I don't think we should be thinking of them that way. So if somebody is going to work with us, whether the fines are the motivating factor or not, i- if we can get them in a timely manner to compliance and rectifying the situation, my preference is always I I'd rather property owners put the money into their property and into clearing code violations rather than just assessing fines and collecting money in the city. So but there's nothing in there's nothing that gives clarity in the ordinances on waiving fines or waiving fees. So we'll be bringing something like that to you all and then to the council to consider. I think it is something that makes sense to come to the planning commission. And if we're going to waive fees or reduce fees, I think that's at least something worthy of talking about and the planning commission is a good group to talk to about that. And then, you know, can be appealed to the council after that. Other cities do it other ways. Some have the community development director, which in this case would be me as the city manager can make that decision. I always like it better to have a deliberative body such as the planning commission because then you get more voices and you get more opinions. And it's not just one point of failure. So that's basically what I wanted to talk about. The only other thing is there is that there are times where code enforcement or code violations are directly tied in with a use permit. And so there I I've had times in my past career where code violations have been taken out of the code. The code enforcement realm and process and actually dealt with by going to the planning commission because they've been so egregious. And outside of the approved use permitted uses of of the property that instead we've come to the planning commission to consider revocation of a use permit. And so so that is a time when it would come to the planning commission to make a determination. Because that's can be, that can be a bigger motivating factor if somebody or business is going to use lose their use permit. Can be a motivating factor to get them to clean up the situation, but also if they're not moving towards fixing the violations, then maybe we don't want them operating that way in our our community. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Do you have anything? Mike?
Schedule of fees? That we can see?
For for fees and fines? For code enforcement? Yeah. Yeah. So code enforcement generally. So the fines, if if we're going the administrative citation route, that's in the ordinance and it's in state law. And the fines typically are, you can find per violation. And it starts off at a hundred dollars for the first violation for the first day. And then the next day is two hundred dollars. And then every day after that, every day that the violation continues, the fine is five hundred dollars per violation. Yeah, so it can it can add up quickly. Again, it's a motivating thing, which is why I think. So that sounds scary, but generally we give folks enough time, thirty days, sixty days, ninety days from the time that they're notified of the violation. We try to give them enough time to clean clear the violation before fines are assessed. So if we get to fines, it's because they've ignored our notice of violation and they haven't made progress in clearing the violation. If we get to the point of administrative hearing or beyond that, like we have we have one actively that's currently potentially in the court system or we've had Alex taken through the civil process or we can take it to the criminal process. Then we also have the ability to assess fees for staff time and for Alex's time and that kind of thing. So and all of that is in the fee schedule and in ordinance.
So on the like the part left your vehicle out on the street for too long, is that a hundred dollar fine or is that just the the first the first
For the for for parking?
Like you're saying, left down in front of someone's house and is being used for storage.
Right. Yeah, no, that that's handled as a as a parking violation. And so then, you know, like the one that was just dealt with, Yenelli went marked it, waited seventy-two hours, then issued a warning, came back the next day, issued a parking ticket and then came back the next day and towed it or a few days later and towed it. Yeah. So that's handled like a parking situation.
That's beyond a fair process, my my thought. If you give them, if you mark it and then warning and then, yeah, it's beyond fair.
Yeah, and I think that our sense is that in that particular case, they wanted us to tow it. I don't think the car necessarily belonged to the folks who lived there. I think it probably was a distant relative or something and it didn't run because after they got the citation, they cleared everything out of the car but left the car with the ticket on on the window. I think they wanted to gone to.
Any else? Questions, comments, clarification?
John, thank you very much. I was one of the ones that came to John and complained about that particular car and a few other few other things, trailers being unhitched. And I appreciate you going out and resolving those problems. I I do, I'm not a big on finding people. You know, it's a good incentive to get them going. I'm I think that, you know, maybe like building permits, if something comes up that they can't correct it in that amount of time that they would go to Karen and say, you know, I'm I'm sorry, I know it's there, but because of this or that, can you give me an extension? But you know, I think we give them plenty of time to, what you just said, John, warning and so forth. So I like it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and and we do, if if folks come in and and show willingness to move forward and have a plan, then yeah, we're fine sitting down with them, working out a plan, especially if it's not a health and safety issue. Then, but if it's health and safety issue, it needs to be dealt with urgently.
Yeah.
Gary?
Yeah, actually, just George pretty much said what I wanted to say. It's I think you're, it's a good way to handle it. I and I think coming back is is great because it's that's really easy to, yeah, you need to fix this. Oh, yeah, okay, I will. Good intentions. And then a month, six months, a year later, now you've forgotten about it, right? So that's good. We're going to figure out some process to circle back around. But yeah, I agree with what everything you're saying about in what you already said about the use of fines. But yeah, I like I like the attitude on it. Thanks.
Another thing that I went and talked to Chris Borkwin about some of these issues. And one of the officers was there and he he thought that it would be a good idea for us as neighbors just to go talk to the neighbor. And in a way, I I agree with that. It's nice of neighborly thing to do. But then I thought about it and if they just, you know, they they say, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. Then they turn their back and go, yeah, screw George, I ain't going to do anything. And then I then the police come along and they go, ah, son of a bitch, turn me into the police. So I think the police ought to handle it on a, you know, right off the bat rather than a concerned neighbor. Because it may cause some ill will.
Hey, anyone else? Nope, seeing nothing. Okay, we'll move on to seven B, which is also for John, a review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Plan for consistency with the city's general plan.
Okay. Thank you. So so this is something that's required by state law. My wife's Google Hub will stop talking to me. Yeah, so so i- it's a requirement in state law that first of all, that we have a capital improvement plan or program. What I'm going to show you is the first time I think that we've looked at starting to map out capital projects over several years. In the past, it's always been handled annually, primarily because we don't have a lot of funding and a lot of resources to do capital projects. So they kind of we do small projects here and there. But, you know, in the recent years, we've got the million dollars in Measure X funding from from TMC. So we're able to take care of some roads. We have ARPA funds. So we're in a unique situation where we're actually starting to be we can we can be a little more proactive with some capital projects and and taking care of some of our critical infrastructure. And in order to do that effectively, we want to start looking at things in multi-year cycles so that we can plan for funding, plan for things that that we go out for. So I've been working with the council and with Roberto on putting that and Ron on putting that together. And we've got a plan for this this year's budget. So part of the law also then requires us to bring the capital projects to the planning commission for review and determination that were that the projects are in compliance with the general plan. And I I don't think that's something that that we've done in the past. It's one of those kind of weird obscure things that only planners know about. Even usually catches public works officials off guard sometimes. But but it is something that we're required to do. It's fairly simple for us because, like I said, we we don't do massive projects typically. And generally, the only time that cities' capital projects might run into a situation where they're not consistent with the general plan would be if you're doing major new infrastructure projects. And you know, if the city were to be, i- i- if the council decided they wanted to do a capital project and build a hotel and work memorial, that would be something that would be worthy of the general or the planning commission reviewing for consistency with the general plan because without reading the general plan, I could tell you it's not consistent with our general plan. Without getting anybody riled up politically, it's just a fun example for me to use. It's not anything in reality. But if the city were to say, hey, we're going to build a road to the north end of the of the airport. We know that's not consistent with the general plan. So that would require a general plan amendment. What's that?
What about city bird?
Yeah. Yes, and we're not going to name the city bird, the turkey. There's a there's a longer story behind that that I'll share with all of you offline. But I'm going to share my screen here. So I'll show you what the projects are that we're talking about. So that everybody can see this. Okay, good. Yep. So this is just the start of of a capital improvement plan. Put in the projects that have been done the last couple of fiscal years so that everybody can see for context what what we have been working on. And then the highlighted sections are the plan for next fiscal year. You can see it's primarily some parking lot and small street improvements. There we got, we're going to use some of the SB one money that's left over. And then we also got ten thousand dollars in trip hazard funding from our insurance carrier. So we're going to do seventy thousand dollars in in repairs to some of our gutters and and curbs to help protect our road system from drainage and from runoff. Because the first thing that impairs your road is if you get water underneath the asphalt. So we want to make sure drainage is working effectively. But generally speaking, all of our projects are those types of capital projects which are directly in compliance and and consistent with the trans- with the transportation. Transportation element in our general plan. They're consistent with maintaining our transportation system. And then same thing with the park improvements with all of the new playground equipment and the parking lot and the accessibility work that we're doing in the park. That's all also consistent with the the parks and recreation element in our general plan. So like I said, there's nothing really controversial or big about our capital improvement plan. It's pretty simple to see how it's consistent with what our general plan guidelines are. But this is one of those administrative legal things that we have to do every year in order to be in compliance with the state if they were ever to come back and audit our our projects. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer specific questions.
Our our new flagpole is not in this or is it on a different page? Because I know we had talked about a new flagpole in front of city hall. And we had to budget for that.
Uh, yeah, that hasn't been that that hasn't been budgeted yet. So
There's only one one reason I bring that up, but something reminded me of it. So.
Yeah. Yeah, when we when we took the flag policy to the council, the council did not take action on wanting to have another flagpole. So that's still on hold.
It's so unfortunate. I agree. There's not no no comment on the capital improvement. All looks good.
Sorry, I was I was muted. I was calling. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of quick questions. John, the the five hundred thousand, that's what's coming out, the the four money, correct?
The five hundred thousand?
Five hundred.
Oh, for the for all the
Well, for the South Boundary work there, the
Oh, oh, yeah, that's
That's that. So my my other question is looking over the future years. Can you remind me, when does that money drop dead? We have to to build, to do the South Boundary realignment? Or we have to get the money back? Is there a inner some is a drop dead date on that, correct?
Uh, actually, Karen, do you know, I'm not aware of a drop dead date because there would be no one to give it back to because it came from foreign. They don't exist anymore.
Too bad.
Don't know of a a drop dead date.
Well, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, we are moving on that project.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's good. That's good. I was afraid because I saw the the shortfall there and I was like, ah, man, I hope we find it. So, okay. I thought there was, I was thinking there was a use it or lose it kind of date. Great. That's good to know. Thanks.
Oh, um, actually, I had a question about the wildfire fuel reduction. There's a grant out there for that and how's it looking?
Actually, we just found out the other day that we we did not get the funding for that. Yeah, it's it's a matter of scale and we're too small and we're not in a we're not in as high a risk fire area as all of other parts of California that seem to catch on fire every year. So we're a little bit lower on the pecking order. Next year, we've been advised to go bigger and include the four-door property and anything that we have. And actually, the more that we ask for, the more competitive we'll be. So we'll be pumping it up for next year.
Yeah, that whole that whole one hundred and sixty acres out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, for it. Okay.
Louise?
Yeah, especially since they had a fire at Laguna Seca yesterday. So
Right.
You know, it's getting a little closer. I mean, although they did, I remember talking to some of the firefighters when the river fire happened. And I said, you know, it was a good thing that it didn't happen on Fort Ord. And they said, no, 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 we like it on Fort Ord. Fort Ord has a lot of roads where they can get back into those areas which they don't have in the mountains. I know it's maybe silly question, but what's ARPA?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's American Recovery Act.
Okay.
Funding. Yeah, so it's the the one point nine million dollar.
Yeah. Okay, that was, and I was going like, hmm, I'm somewhere.
ARPA has a different meaning for us. That's the advanced research office the DOD has.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's the funding that came to all the cities to help recover from the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. It says recommended, but we don't have funding. So I'm kind of confused on that. ARPA recommended?
Yeah, it it's recommended because it's not officially approved until the council adopts the budget.
Oh, okay.
But they've already given approval to that use.
Okay.
Well, not official approval, but they all are in agreement with how it's being recommended.
Thank you.
Gary, did you have something more?
No, I thought I must have hit I must have hit twice. Sorry, I'll lower it.
Um, and John, you told me that this that there's really no teeth to this. This is really just kind of administrative more than anything else.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, if if you thought there was a project on there that wasn't consistent with the general plan, then we could have a discussion about that. But generally speaking, it's just to approve the resolution deeming that the the projects are consistent with the general plan and then uh deeming that the the projects are consistent with the general plan, and then we can move it forward to the council for them to approve. Uh, you could choose to modify the resolution to add comments on the projects if you wanted. Um, but but yeah, uh, it's uh unless there's a project that you see on there that you think is inconsistent with the general plan, then it's really just kind of an administrative process.
Does anybody see anything that they question or want to have amended?
Actually, the silly question here, um fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, those all happened, right? So everything is, okay. And so anything that's listed here will just, it just moves forward. That's the kind of the
Right.
Alright.
Anybody else? Okay, I will um request a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Karen, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please. Commissioner Wood?
Hi.
Commissioner Burger?
Hi.
Commissioner Creaker?
Hi.
Commissioner Getzelt?
Hi.
Commissioner Jackshow?
Hi.
Chairman Hayworth?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Guess we're just about there. Um, announcements. Um, anybody have an announcement?
Um. I sent that, I sent that email, so y'all should find it in your mailboxes on the city of uh of Monterey's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So.
Gary?
If you didn't get it, let me know. I'm not a hundred percent sure that I had all the correct emails.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I will be, uh, if we do have a meeting in uh July, I'm gonna be out of town, so I'll try and and uh make it if we if we have it, but I will be out of town, so.
Nice.
Alright, uh, let everybody know about uh the garage sales coming up next month, the thirtieth, the last Saturday of the month. And I'm getting things rolling, so we'll get flyers out.
I'm very excited.
Thanks, George.
And Karen, uh, thanks for banging on my door. I appreciate that. Sometimes my brain is other places.
Like, George, log on.
Oh, Lordy.
Mike, you have anything?
Yeah, I, this may be out of sequence, but um uh Gary, directly across from your house and my house, there's that that sort of pie-shaped lot, uh, they're they're, the new owners are doing a bunch of work on it.
Ned and Annie, yeah.
Yeah, they seem like really nice people, but I I don't recall seeing in the plans that they were knocking down the fireplace chimney. Is that something I missed?
I don't remember. I was, I was receding you, so I don't honestly.
In here, I would just, it's more than anything, but uh anyhow, I'm glad to see they're going forward with the project.
No, I don't remember a fireplace going.
Commissioner Burger, do you have an address? What?
I believe ten fifty-five.
Ten fifty-five.
Oh, but it, yeah, I think it's ten fifty-five.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Quendale.
Quendale, thank you.
Yeah. I'm looking at the at the permit report. I'm trying to
Okay. Take a look at it. I'll have Joe Headley look at the plans as well.
Okay.
Anything more, Mike?
N- no, thank you. John, thank you very much for for uh your presentation. That was informative.
Thank you.
Denise?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, I really, I've got nothing either. Um, thank you.
One thing, I've got one thing, Chair, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, uh, so um Commissioner Burger called today. We weren't able to accommodate him uh, uh, cause Ron's running around like a chicken with his head cut off. But for those of you who haven't had a chance to get out yet to tour the uh, the back forty, we still uh can accommodate that. So you all can get out and check out the uh the Ford Ward property. It's it's good, I think, for everybody to get eyes on it and walk around and see what's happening.
I think we're gonna come visit.
Yeah, Denise and I went and it was eye-opening.
Uh-huh. Send me an email with some dates and times that you're good and all on their schedule.
Me too. Thanks, Karen.
No. I'm sorry to, there's more thing. Um, back when we had the 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 Carmel Fire last year, uh Anna Cruz Fire, uh, like my cousin, who's my insurance broker, uh, called me up and said, how far are you? He's Angeles, how far is your house from those fires? And I said, several miles, fortunately. We we get nervous, but we were several miles. He said, that's good, because if if those fires within two miles of your property, you can get canceled. And and your ability to get traditional homeowners insurance can be impossible because of that. So I say that because it's a bit of a of a a little fear. Um if Fort Ord is what it was kind of what's going on, there was kind of a, the the portrayal of things that are happening and have happened there. May find place to have a a a fire occur. And that could affect all of us financially. So just a little FYI, if you have a a thought that maybe for against it, there's something that might make you reconsider your position on on uh protecting your home. But anyhow, that's not a political statement. That's just, I was, I was surprised by that.
Well, you're you're lucky, Mike. Mike, my insurance did cancel.
Oh, because of
I guess they look at the zip code or something like that.
Oh, you're kidding? Are you?
No, I
Sorry, Denise.
Oh, I was gonna say, I had the, we tried to change and quit. So, yeah, there, so there's many carriers that won't, won't, because we're in our zip code, they won't, they won't cover you.
It depends on the carrier. They don't, they don't all go by the same rule. And if you look at that new map, the uh they put out, the the feds put out, it's it's, we're, we're, we're in it, so.
So carriers and following rules, if they're admitted in the state of California, they do have to abide by those rules. Um, I mean, unless they just want to be that that casual about it, but um it is something to consider. And George, were you able to get insurance through the state?
Uh, my son-in-law luckily is a insurance broker and found us another insurer, so but it did come as a surprise that, you know, sorry, because you live in that zip code regardless of how far away you are, you know. It is what it is.
It could uh affect people wanting to move to our area as well.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Um, there is a firewise presentation at Carmel Valley Community Park on ten o'clock on the eighteenth, on Saturday, the eighteenth. And there's supposed to be a sign ad, and we at the HOA are looking into uh trying to get firewise certified. Um, but they have a number of exhibits that are supposed to be according to the ad that I saw on things that you can do around your home. Uh, even those of us in the city uh or at the edge, and we're at the HOA, we've got the airport behind us, which I'm kind of concerned about because they're not real diligent about cleaning up the areas that backs onto the condos. Um, but things that you can do around your home, even uh even when you live within the city limits to to mitigate fire and and make it uh easier for the fire department to protect if fire comes near.
Don't forget, we did have a fire on South Boundary a couple, what, five years ago, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
That was somebody, that was somebody who threw a cigarette out of the car, and luckily, the police had to watch him do it.
Oh, my God.
That's right.
Karen, you have anything?
I do not. Thanks for asking.
John, anything more?
No, I'm all good. Thanks, Chair.
Everybody good?
Everybody's good.
Okay, alright. Um, next meeting of the Del Rio Planning Commission will be July thirteenth at six P M. And I call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Good to see all of you.